Okay, good evening. This is the Eastline Board Selectmen Regular Meeting of November fifth, two thousand and twenty five. We're in the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. It's seven o'clock and we will, uh, why I speak a second?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. All right, so are there any additional agenda and consent calendar items?
I have one.
Okay.
Okay. I would propose that we remove three A discussion Eastline High School pool roof to be replaced with two separate items. Three A, part one, pool roof discussion, and three A, part two, uh, seed funds.
Okay.
We pool roof discussion, oh, three A two.
Should I read out the name of seeds?
And then it would be discussion of possible action of the, uh, special ed.
Education and expansion and development grant.
Yup.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's three A two, right?
Three A two, all right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Being none, motion carries. So the, uh, agenda will reflect the changes. Are there any, uh, public delegations tonight to push to address? The board of selectmen? Any public delegations? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Okay, uh, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the public hearing minutes of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion, any changes, corrections? Hearing none, um, do I hear, uh, um, so we've already first, we've seconded it, right? All in favor approving the minutes, you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Being none, motion carries. Next is the regular meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or extensions? Motion carries. All right, next, special meeting of, uh, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty five.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of October twentieth, two thousand and twenty five as submitted.
Okay, I seen enough, there was no forum, so, all right. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. Finally, the special meeting of October twenty first, two thousand and twenty five.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of October twenty first, two thousand and twenty five as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, or any discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent calendar.
I have a, so we approved the minutes as they were submitted. Now, if I have a question about one section of the minutes, should I reserve them, those comments, and ask, uh, when it comes time for exhibition reports? Or put it in?
Well, I guess my, my question is, did you agree with how the, uh, the minutes were?
Yes.
Prepared and.
Right, so, so we voted on the.
Yes, we accepted them as they were reported.
Right, rather than having a discussion. So, I, at this time, I can, um, point out a question that I have, because we can't change the minutes, the minutes of what happened.
Right, it's, it's the question on approving the minutes is, were they an accurate reflection of what occurred at the meeting?
Correct.
And so, that's, and so you're okay with that, right?
Uh, yes, so my point is, I, that would now like to, or during the course of the meeting, question whether there is a change made to the motion that we voted on. In other words, could I just say what it is?
I'm not clear with your question, so you're, you're accepting the minutes.
Yes.
But you have a comment about the, about them?
Correct, about whether th- a circumstance might have changed since the election.
So that would be going forward then, because the minutes were submitted as of that date, that time, and that's correct. So now went forward then, yeah, there's a change.
I would like to know where that would go in the agenda.
Well, I, I, I guess, um.
Can we make it, uh, an addition to the agenda?
I already did that.
All right, should we do it at, um?
We can do it at, uh, why don't you do it during, why don't you do it during a exhibition report?
I'll do that.
Okay, that might be appropriate, all right. Okay. Uh, I'm going to go to the consent calendar.
Move, move to approve the consent calendar for November fifth, two thousand and twenty five in the amount of nine thousand one hundred forty seven dollars and twenty seven cents.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Looks pretty, uh, straightforward, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, we're going to turn to old business. First item on the agenda is discussion of possible action pension board ordinance. We're going to table that discussion, we don't have the ordinance, so we will table it.
We don't need a motion for that? To table it?
Nope.
No, we can just, that's discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. The next is two B, appointments to the pension board. Do I have a motion?
Move to appoint Sarah Rolfe, Assistant Tax Collector, to the employee-held seat on the pension board.
Okay. All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
I was just reviewing the paperwork and it looks like she was the only person who applied for the position, and I think she was, um, she spoke to, is it, um, to you, Kevin?
Uh, yep, so, uh, Mrs. Rolfe, uh, had an interview with myself and the H R director. Uh, we had a list of questions, um, you know, pertaining to the pension plan, um, and it was our recommendation to, uh, to recommend her for the spot.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any, any, uh, further discussion or commentary or questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, and it's great. Uh, next, item C, we're going to table appointments to the C I P committee, we will, uh, wait till December to do that. Next is two D, appointments to school building committee, do I hear a motion?
Move the following, resolve that the board of selectmen determines it is necessary to replace the roof at Niantic Center School and to approve and authorize a school building committee to undertake the project within approved appropriations and grant funds received by the town for that project. Further pursuant to subsection A of Eastline Ordinance, section thirty one point two five, the board of selectmen hereby appoints Board of Education members William Dear, Derry, and Alyssa Bradley to serve respectively as the eighth and ninth members of the school building committee.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, great.
Okay, so now it comes to where I can actually make a comment here.
Right, this is the discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, under the appointments, we, uh, agreed on Bill Derry and Alyssa Bradley. Since this time of like, the ele- election has taken place, uh, both of them were, I believe, were reelected. So, I just want to make sure that, um, that, that there's no conflict here with those two individuals.
I do believe that, uh, only one of them was elected.
No.
No, I think they were.
They're both?
They were both reelected, correct?
Both reelected.
Yes, they've been serving all along.
Yeah.
So they've been serving and they've been reelected, correct? Is that the?
Yeah.
The posture, okay. All right. So does that resolve your concern?
Yes, I thought it would done. I thought that we should just double check that to see that the, the numbers still, still balanced.
I have unofficial, uh, totals here, which suggest otherwise.
What do you mean?
I, I don't have, uh, stuff from the Secretary of State, I have, um, numbers posted from last night.
Well, no.
Right, but the numbers don't matter.
Yeah.
People are talking about the same, two people that have been serving on the Board of Education. They went up for reelection, they were reelected.
Yeah.
So it would remain that they would continue on. Is m-
I think the question.
There's minority representation.
Right.
So Bill Derry is on, and then Alyssa Bradley, I think, is on by minority representation.
Correct.
That, that's what I'm trying to tell you, I don't think she is.
Then there was two people, hold on.
I mean, I, I don't know if I'm the, the, the authority on this, but it is, you know, looks like it's questionable to me.
Okay.
How do we find out, how do we go forward?
I believe the official results were posted and, um, put out.
So, the newspaper said Board of Education winners included incumbent Democrat Vivek Peruwit, Democrat Steve Luber, Democratic incumbent Bill Derry.
Mm-hmm.
Repub- Republican incumbent Alyssa Bradley and Republican Lee McNamara Gianakis.
Correct.
So those are the Board of Ed members.
Correct.
Correct.
So we're clear?
Yeah.
Correct.
So we're good. So, are you good, Jason?
I am good, yes.
Okay, so my question is, and I don't know if this goes to.
Okay.
Maybe Jeff, um, Newton, does, as far as you know, do Bill Derry, Alyssa Bradley, have they volunteered, do they want to serve on this school building committee?
Yes, correct.
They do.
They do, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Yep, good question, yes, they do.
Got it.
Good. Any other questions regarding that or concerns, were, are we satisfied?
Yes.
We good?
Oh, I am, yes.
Okay, all right. Then let's call for all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, great, congratulations to William and Alyssa. Okay. Now we're going to turn to new business, and the first item will be item A, and, uh, a change in the description, it'll be discussion on the Eastline High School pool roof. Is that right, is that how you would frame the, the?
Yes, discussion on the pool roof.
Discussion on the pool roof, okay. And, and, uh, good afternoon.
How are we doing?
Jeff, if you could just identify yourself for the record and give us what we need to know here on this.
Sure, Jeff Newton, Superintendent, um, and resident fifty-three, Abercrossing. Um, so we wanted to update you, uh, as we updated the Board of Education regarding the aquatic center, um, roof. Um, when the dollars were officially approved at the two point four million, that was under the assumption that we were going to be getting, um, state reimbursement on eligible costs for the roof. Um, we have since, about two weeks ago, we met with Department Administrative Services representatives, um, and they informed us, unfortunately, that, uh, they consider it an auditorium that is separate, like a turf field or a tennis court, for instance. So, without us doing the entire high school roof, they will not reimburse us, uh, the forty percent on eligible costs for the roof, uh, the roof project. So, it's been approved at the two point four million, but we're moving forward with, now knowing that we won't be receiving, uh, any reimbursement on the eligible, on any eligible costs.
What was the anticipated reimbursement, forty percent?
Forty percent, yeah, so roughly, what, eight hundred thousand, roughly around eight hundred thousand dollars, so, yeah.
And they're, they're saying they won't do it because it's?
Because it's, they're considering it, uh, they, they, it's, it's an auditorium, but they're considering it just like a separate entity, um, a tennis court, a turf field, uh, that's, that was how they designated it. If there's any other kind of, that was pretty much the clarity that they, and we asked every which way to Sunday, you know, um, you know, what? It, because it is connected, but they said the only way that they will approve it is if you are doing the other sections of the roof as a whole entity. They won't separate it out as its own. When we thought, because, you know, we have P E students that use it, we used everything we could, that, you know, we were, we were expecting reimbursement on this, and they won't, uh, they won't do it.
Have they ever previously given us reimbursement, like where you could say, hey, you reimbursed us before?
Not, not in this, not for the roof, no, not for something of this nature, and they haven't given us any reimbursement. There's no reimbursement on the turf fields, um, no.
Nothing is being considered.
So nothing in the pool in general with the years?
No, no, nothing that they have provided reimbursement on, unfortunately.
Okay.
So now we have a, we have a, a substantial hole in our funding for this.
No, 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 we, the two point four million was approved, uh, we were just expecting, um, and it's already been bonded, or will be bonded for, but we just won't be getting that set of reimbursement dollars, um, on eligible costs back, unfortunately.
And we have a letter from the town's bond council that says, uh, we've already fully approved it, there's no further action needed.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just unfortunate, we just want to make sure you're aware, um, of that, yes, you told the Board of Education, yeah, but, uh.
The bond council stood, we.
Yep.
You got it.
Yeah, cause, so when we, just so everyone knows, all these projects, the other roofs as well, um, so I think Lily Behance and Niantic Center, I think we, we have slated for new roofs on those.
Yes.
Um, so those projects, just like this, are fully funded and fully approved with the anticipation that the state doesn't, you know, won't reimburse us, and in the hopes, you know, that we do get that reimbursement for things like this.
Yeah.
That wasn't necessary to complete the project, we have the funding.
Correct, we have the full funding for this project.
For the other roofs, are we supposed to get forty percent?
We, we are, forty percent on eligible cost, yes, so Niantic Center. Yes, exactly, so.
So this is the exception.
This is the exception, the one roof exception, yeah, so.
Okay, great.
I appreciate the clarity on that and, uh, your current thinking, so, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so then that brings us to A two, which is discussion of possible action, uh, on the school educational expansion and development grant.
All right, I'll do the motion.
Okay.
Move the following, resolve to approve and forward to the Board of Finance a special appropriation in the amount of sixty-three thousand three hundred dollars representing a special education expansion and development seed grant from the state of Connecticut to be used by the Board of Education in accordance with Public Act, um, twenty-five dash sixty-seven, section seven. This requires a town meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion, so, okay, it, could you give us some additional information?
Yeah, so, um, the state had allocated thirty million, um, for, to be distributed across the state to assist with special education services costs. Um, Eastline was entitled to sixty-three thousand three hundred of that. Um, there are parameters, um, and guidelines as to what we can use it for. It's really allocated specifically for, um, special education, um, services. Uh, can't be, can't be supplanting, um, we are looking to provide some additional behavioral support services, uh, in one of our programs. It's not a lot of money, but it's going to help with, um, you know, and some additional, uh, supports, um, for some students. Um, we anticipate that this could become a yearly funded grant, per se, in addition to excess costs that we receive. We'll see what happens, um, if they allocate additional dollars, but at this point, we don't know that. Not all the money has been released yet, I think only a quarter of it, uh.
They do twenty-five in October twenty-five.
Yeah. So twenty-five percent in October, then twenty, but then, and then the final fifty percent, so we don't have all the funding yet. So we're piecemealing that along with some behavioral supports as, as our current plan.
Do you know, I was looking through all the numbers, do you know what their, what logic was and how they determine the amount of money?
That's a great question.
I was, I was, and I was like, oh, I didn't even know.
Yeah, it's usually the same thing, uh, because I, you know, I've talked to other districts and superintendents, and you got what? And it's different, we have no, we don't know.
You have no idea.
Yeah, and I think the state is actually kind of catching up, because we just received a frequently asked questions document as to what we specifically can use it, you know, for, because we, we, we didn't know, and we're ready to try and pull the trigger on some things, so.
Yeah, just because I know we have a lot that are, you know, students who are outsourced and, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And a lot of, uh, special needs students, so.
Yeah.
That was, um.
So this, this helps, it doesn't go a long ways, but it definitely helps, and we're obviously going to accept it, uh, that's for sure, yeah.
Definitely.
Is, is this, this is not per pupil, this is a?
No, 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 that would be great, Jason.
So there's, you're giving, the town of Canaan gets a hundred twenty-five bucks.
Yes, exactly, that's why it's so crazy in the allocation, like what are you going to do with a hundred twenty-five bucks?
I just have a question one, it says it's based on the education cost sharing grant.
Okay, so they use that formula, there you go, okay, so they use that formula, which, yeah, so.
So what is our education cost sharing grant for?
Six hundred and, oh, I'm sorry, six million, sorry. So, yeah, a little over six, thank you, yes, a little over six million, uh, that comes directly to the town, yeah, yeah.
So then it's sixty-three.
Forgot to add a zero.
Okay.
Is the motion on the table?
Yep.
Any further discussion, questions? Superintendent. All right, then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, I think that's, uh, yeah, we, we handled both of those, so you don't need to say to address any more.
Appreciate it.
Unless you want to.
Unless you want to say.
Thank you.
Everybody, thank you.
Appreciate that. Discussion of possible, automated ticketing ordinance, now, but I see this is on the draft motions. Is that to be tabled? So three B, proposed ordinance, automated ticketing, item to be tabled.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so we're going to table.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, next is to, uh, is it the public?
Wait, 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 but then.
Yeah, but then we're scheduling a public hearing?
Yeah, so it says.
Only for the one.
For the ordinance to authorize the use of the traffic enforcement safety devices, so.
No, so we're not going to do, we're not going to, so.
So then we're not scheduling a public hearing, is that correct?
Am I allowed to ask why it's on the table?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I thought we were going to discuss, do, do you know why that changed?
I wrote table both ordinances, but I don't.
Well, is Chief Glenn supposed to come in and, like, talk to us about it, is, is that? Or are, are we just supposed to set up for the public hearing?
Well, I asked him, I said he could come and speak tonight, but that the public hearing was to be scheduled for the nineteenth, and that could also be a place where he could come and speak.
So we could discuss the, the ordinance tonight?
Well, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, all right, I agree.
Do we have a copy of it?
Yeah, it's in your, it should be in your.
It's in your packet, yeah.
All right, so there is no reason to table the discussion.
Yeah, we can just discuss.
We can discuss it.
Yeah.
That sounds good, all right, so, uh, let me reverse that, we will, um, we will.
If you don't have it, I brought one because it's also.
I don't think I have it.
Okay.
There's information from other ordinances that we wanted you to look at, if not, then ignore it. And just look at what the attorney states.
Okay.
Please?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so we, so this is the proposed, yeah, let's just focus on the proposed ordinance, and let's just make sure everybody has a copy of it at this point.
Yes.
And does Cindy?
I'll bring her one, yeah?
Yes.
I'll bring her one, Cindy, thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, so as we sit here, we, uh, we all have a copy of the, of the proposed ordinance. So, okay, so why don't we take a minute to look at it, and then we can discuss, uh, some of the parameters.
Dan?
Yes.
We decided to table the, um, inland wetlands regulations.
That's.
And Mr. Glashaw is here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yeah, we can just, we are going to table the inland.
Well, if you see it, Kevin.
I, I just got to have copies of the draft to hand out.
Okay, all right, then we'll, we'll leave it on the agenda for the moment, but why don't we?
Table, untable?
We'll untable that, and, and then just give us a moment and.
I'll be all too.
All right. Let's just talk about this.
Yes.
Let's just talk about this, and then we'll go into that, okay, great. So bear with us, Gary.
No worries.
Thank you.
We'll get there. You, you all set, right? Yeah, you and I are good.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we.
Not speed.
Yeah, thank you.
Good day, Kevin, thank you.
Sorry.
Appreciate your input.
I'd love to listen, I'll listen from the car.
Well, you know.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Okay, so, um, yeah, we have a lot of definitions, but let's just take a moment. So, if I may, I think there's, uh, a lot here, and to just throw this at you and say, look, let's, let's assimilate it and have a, a meaningful discussion, I, I think for our purposes right now, I want to be sure that everybody has it. I would suggest that we review it, and then at our next meeting, when we have the chief here, um, and we have a public hearing, in the benefit of that public hearing, then maybe we can have a worthwhile discussion. How, what, what is the thought on that?
So. So I think this is a topic which will require some substantial public input.
Yeah.
Debate and, and hearing from, uh, or content from the police chief. So we are absolutely going to have to have a public hearing. I think it's, it feels a little strange to go straight to the public hearing process without us kind of kicking it around.
Agreed.
At the first.
That's what I think.
Then let's not, all right, then, then let's not schedule the public hearing for this. Let's, we can take this home, we can study it.
So we're not going to ask questions right now, we're not going to have to.
I'm not, I mean, unless you have, I mean, if there's some preliminary questions you want to ask or subject lands.
I would like to, so I'm not even halfway through. So where are these going to be located, are we going to know where they're located? Are they going to be in the Flanders district, are they going to be in Main Street, are they going to be all over town? What is the, what is the thought here?
I'm totally with Kevin.
There's so many things, it's not that easy here.
It looks like, I mean, just reading through it, it said that, prior to commencing the operate, under seventy-four point one three, prior to commencing the operation of the automatic tri- traffic enforcement safety device, they would install at least two conspicuous signs at a reasonable distance advance of such a location, and they provide notification. Now, what they did say, the places it would be, would be school zone areas, the traffic controls, that's pretty much it, but, I mean, so, you know, we've got, what, four schools, basically, and then, I guess it's if people are running stop signs. Um, I guess my concern, and this isn't necessarily about the ordinance, as much as, what's the cost to the town to, um, implement this? Um, I didn't know if it was just, like, the police, I, the vendor, I guess, does some of the work, but then, is there, you know, somebody that has to be hired or, you know, to, to do this, and, um.
And then the fines would come into.
To try to, yeah.
To offset the cost.
Yeah, that's kind of it, yeah.
My understanding is that the fines pay for the cost, a portion of the funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I guess I'd want to know, you know, what that would entail from the town, from the town budget to, to pay for.
Tonight, on, on channel three, W F S B, they did a story on the Marlboro, and you're required to have two signs prior to the stop.
Yeah.
They use three, and they've already generated three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in revenue. The only, and it's a nice little five hundred piece on marbles and how it's doing and how it's being implemented and their hardware, and they show how it's helping. They also, uh, the one thing that I thought was kind of, um, it could be political, is that the chief can arbitrarily decide, nah, it's not that bad. And it's, it's.
What do you mean?
Meaning that he can, issue a ticket, he reviews the tapes every day.
Oh, they override the ticket.
So, so he, he reviews the computer and the tapes of twenty-one violations a day prior.
Yeah.
And he can make it, he can make it an arbitrary decision, he, he gets a ticket, or he doesn't get a ticket.
Well.
And I don't know if that's discretion, is in our.
Well, I don't know who would be looking at these, they said there would be some, I guess, police officer maybe or something.
It sounded like it was a police officer assigned to do it.
Yeah.
It was his, his task, but it, it's a very good video explaining the whole process.
So then that comes the question to me, how much time is that actually going to put on[1772.71] So then that comes the question to me, how much time is that actually going to put on the very limited officers that we actually already have?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
The onion, it's really bad, okay.
And then, my only other issue, um, is it says if it exceeds its posted speed limit by ten or more miles, I would prefer to say by more than ten, because, I don't know, I usually go, okay, if it's twenty-five, you can go thirty-five, and you're not gonna get picked up, usually if you go ten over, you're usually there.
Really? You go, you go thirty-five? You don't know, that's on the problem.
I, I, yeah, well, I mean, I'm just being realistic.
If I get pulled over one more time on Waterford Run, or that bridge, no.
Well, to answer Cindy's question, I think that's a good one, because it, an officer's wanting to decide who gets a ticket.
Cindy, did you call Cindy?
Candace, I know Cindy, I'm sorry, it was a lawyer friend.
I know, everybody's tired.
So.
My goodness.
No, this is.
Cindy's in the, Cindy's here though.
Sorry, Candace, yeah, um, it should be an officer reviewing the tapes, so to answer your question, yes, it's not a big time. But it's, it's pretty fast, um, one guy crossed the white line, he goes, nah, you know, but it could be a friend, it could be, I, I don't know, you know what I'm saying? Just the arbitrary part was concerning, but however, good judgment always should be used, so, uh, but it's, it looked like a great revenue draw for the town, and also slow people down.
Sure.
One problem they found, though, is once they went through the trap, they gained the time back of, for slowing down. They're saying that people speed up after they get through the camera zone.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's a good video, it, it's.
So which, which station was that?
FSB, Channel Three.
I think we should, I would suggest we try to look at that.
Yeah, we should, we should inform ourselves.
Yeah.
Well, I.
This is a really big issue, with a lot of interconnected tendrils, and I think this is exactly the place to slow down the discussion.
I agree.
And not rush to any conclusion.
I would assume, though, that if, you know, if you get picked up and you get, you get a charge for it, that you're gonna slow down, not just through the area, but, you know, your habit will change.
Well, you would think, I, I know that they utilize, they did utilize this on the highway, right, going through where Costco was,
Do you know what I mean?
When there was a tremendous amount of things going on there, right?
Yeah.
Mm.
Yeah.
And then, you know, people were getting taken, and that kind of thing, so people did slow down, so it is, it's.
People were getting taken, too.
It is a lower fine than a regular speeding ticket being pulled by the police, and it's gonna be mailed to you.
Well, the other thing is it doesn't affect your insurance, which is key.
That would be violation, for a property.
Yeah, it's, yeah, because that's, you don't want your premiums to go up.
Yeah.
Um, my other, like, I guess, suggestion would be, you know, maybe the first time you can get a warning or something versus, you know,
there's a scheduling here of what, what's planned, and how many days can last before another one, before it turns back to.
Well, he said twenty-five dollars for the first one, and then like fifty or something, I think, is, is what I read, yeah.
I think it's a, as a processing fee, to scale.
Yeah, and a processing fee of up to fifteen dollars, yeah.
Okay, so there's incentives to slow people down, so to be safe for cost of, there's a revenue to come into the town, but then it would be the cost
Yeah. Yeah, and that's a big issue, yeah.
To start it and run it.
Yeah, I guess that would be my concern, the cost to implement this.
Then there's a plate reading issue, and, and there are some concerns.
Civil Liberties.
Civil Liberties has about that, and I think we need to look at that a little bit as well.
Civil Liberties has.
They have concerns about plate readers, privacy, and, and.
Well, your plate is public.
Yeah, but I don't know, if, if I see your plate, I don't know who you are, and I don't, I don't, I just know your plate number.
Is it not? Your, your plate is public.
Yeah.
So the plate reader's gonna identify, um, you know, all your information, it's tied to that plate, it can also identify if there's an outstanding warrant for you.
Well, you could do that if you.
If it's a police officer, they can do that, right?
They could do that.
So, I mean.
Well, you could just do that anyway, like, not that I've ever done it, 'cause I haven't, but can't you just go on the computer and do that?
No. A, a, a police officer could, but you, and I can't.
Yeah, he's gotta have reason to do that.
Yeah.
Oh.
So there are some, yeah, there, there, it's an issue that is a concern to some, and part, should be part of the discussion.
Okay. Okay.
Also, too, in that discussion, the plate reader, uh, they have this, these, I shouldn't say kids, sorry, James, but I'm just, they're, they're putting the, the mask over the license plate, you know, the tinted glass.
Yeah.
To make it difficult to read.
Right.
So that's a violation in itself, too.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, well, we have a lot of questions, can we forward those questions to the chief prior, maybe that way he has an idea of kind of where
Good idea. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, maybe we'll just, uh.
All the questions are coming from anything. Yeah, that way it's not like a.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Are you gonna do that?
We could, we can each do it individually, I mean, we each have, or do you wanna forward it to me?
No, we're making forward it.
Yeah, we should probably have a.
Did you just get a consensus of all the things that we said?
So if you wanna forward to my, to my email.
Okay.
And then I can, uh, we can put them together and just send an email to the chief with.
Sure.
You know, try to get, you know, so we don't get all duplicates, and try to come up with a list of concerns.
Yeah.
One thing you did say, to be clear on, though, was that twenty-five for the first one, you were saying maybe, maybe the first one should be a warning. He's suggesting fifty for the first one, seventy-five for the second, and each one would also impose a processing fee of fifteen.
Up to fifteen, yeah.
So just to be clear, that if they're higher, it'd be.
Than what I think, I guess I was reading, they had the other statute from Fairfield and other towns I was reading, so.
Yeah, so I, I think it would be worthwhile to, you know, take a look at this over the next week or so, and then, uh, if you wanna forward questions to me, then we'll put them together, we'll get them to the chief.
I'd also be curious, how do the other towns do this? Like, what other towns do it?
I think in your packet, there are some other.
Right there.
There was like, three or four, but I think they said there was only one that has gone forward with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there, there was a sample, there was Milford.
So it's, it's something to kind of gauge it off.
Yes.
And then Fairfield, we have one from Fairfield.
Fairfield is in there, yeah.
Yeah, so it's in your packet, and you can go through it and see what other, I think there's one there, too. Milford, Fairfield.
You know, I like, I like putting the questions out publicly, that way when people review and they, they're watching the minutes, they're like, oh, you know, they're asking those questions.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's all.
Yeah, I think it's important to get those, our questions out publicly in some form, so once they're all condensed in Dan's inbox, I don't know, maybe we could have them read on the record or something.
We could send them to Chief Glenn, and Chief Glenn can address them at the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're also, at the public hearing, allowed to ask questions, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect.
I think, yeah, public hearing is mostly for the public to, to ask questions, though.
Right, but, but if we have the police chief here, we can.
Yeah, that's what.
I mean, we could ask him questions, I mean, I mean, the, the public can express their concerns to us, and that's the, the purpose of it.
I mean, yeah. Hmm.
Um, and then when we, and then when we go to act on it, um, with police chief here, then that's also a time that we can ask.
Okay.
Okay.
The chief, what his position is, and answer questions about it, so, um, why don't we, we can, uh, move forward in that way, and unless there's any other discussion we wanna have right now, above it, or we?
So, so we're gonna schedule a public hearing now?
Uh, no, I don't think we should schedule a public hearing, I think we should just, uh, have it occur again on the agenda, and, and we'll invite the, the chief, um, so he has plenty of notice, and we'll, we will, we will have had an opportunity to get some questions to the chief, so he can come and discuss those with us. Does that make good sense, everybody?
Yep.
Yeah.
Which would then be followed by the public hearing.
Then after that, we'll do a public hearing.
Got it.
I mean, I think we need to, as, as Jason suggested, and which I agree with, we need to slow the pace down a little bit on this, 'cause it's a very important thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we really need to know, um, how the public feels, and we wanna make sure it's, it's transparent, so.
Hmm.
We'll get those questions, we'll, um, share those questions in the packet for the next meeting, so the public will also know what questions we ask the chief. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Good.
Okay. All right, so, um, all right, so we're not gonna schedule a public hearing on the ticketing ordinance. So the only, uh, public hearing we're gonna schedule is for the. No, nothing?
No, we don't have anything.
Nothing?
No public hearing.
But, um, Gary's here, it's, you know.
Okay.
To go with inland wetlands.
IWA.
Yeah.
All right. So, the next is discussion and overview of proposed IWA regulations, and we'll invite Gary Gaisel to the podium. Good evening, Gary, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Gary.
Hi, Gary, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks. This is in addition to.
Oh, you already have copies.
I don't think I do.
Extra copy, if you don't have it, it's the executive summary, which is there on, on. So just briefly, uh, this is a referral from the inland wetland agency to you as a courtesy that they're viewing and looking to propose basically a comprehensive overhaul of their regulations. Um, the big changes are really in the definition sections, where we, uh, add new definitions to regulated area, repairing buffer, vegetative buffer, vernal pool, watershed management, and more specifically, substantial, minor, and intermediate, insignificant regulated activities are defined, we're breaking the permit up into three different categories, minor, intermediate, and significant, where intermediate and significant regulated activities would be reviewed by the commission, minor would be reviewed by my office, uh, or the inland wetland agent, whoever that is at the time. Um, as most of you know, uh, in twenty-twenty, we adopted the three-hundred-foot upland review area, uh, the draft still contains that, uh, three-hundred-foot upland review, um, it did add in a slope-based trigger of, of slopes in greater than twenty percent, uh, within a hundred feet, um, so there's changes there. Uh, application requirements, we got more detail regarding the submittal requirements for A-two, T-two, survey accuracy, certified soil scientist delineation with numbered flags, we just got more specific as to what we wanna see, uh, in regards to those items. Um, a new requirement is that we're going to require that the proof of property taxes are current for permit applications. Uh, we also had adopted, and again, is still in there, is a signposting standard for public hearings, um, we previously didn't have that, that was already in, still carried forward. Again, and then enforcement, procedural clarity, timelines for hearings and orders, publication requirements, we clarified some of that, uh, but still, in my opinion, needs to be addressed, if the agency continues forward with the three-hundred-foot upland review area, is they probably should add some language in there to authorize the agent to determine non-regulated or exempt activities within that three-hundred-foot area. Um, I think that would ease some of the burden on those who live within the three-hundred feet, but were, were beyond a hundred when the regulations previously were a hundred. Uh, things like decks, sheds, pools, even single-family houses, three-hundred feet, two-hundred feet away, one-hundred-and-fifty feet away, um, I think those are reasonably, can be issued by an inland wetland agent with any experience, erosion, sedimentation control. Um, obviously, moving closer, thresholds that I use are twenty-five feet, if, if a project is twenty-five feet or closer, or moving a hundred cubic yards or more material, um, then typically I would defer that to the agency review, so that section is, breaking the permit up as we're doing, and if we can massage maybe that language in the enforcement section regarding determinations, I think that might address some of the issues that we've been having, uh, over the last ten years. Uh, just for background, this started back, uh, probably seven years ago with a subcommittee of the inland wetland agency, um, so we finally getting to the, uh, the finish line, if you will. So, uh, these are for your edification, if you see any errors, typos, feel free to share. The public hearing for this is expected to go forward on December second, twenty-twenty-five, uh, here at Town Hall.
Will we have an opportunity to ask questions of you once we've reviewed this in this setting, or is this kind of our only opportunity?
Uh, I'm more than happy to come back, there will be a public hearing, I mean, again, the referral is not statutorily required, so, any questions that you have, I'm more than happy, my door is open, uh, call, I invite you to the public hearing, uh, you can ask then. I do anticipate that hearing being continued until the January, uh, possibly longer, being that it's a commission-initiated application, there, we don't necessarily have to follow the timelines as required for public hearings, so we could leave it open for months if we be. Again, uh, substantial changes to it would probably require kind of starting all over, but, uh, if, if we can stay within the context of the current substance and not significantly change this, then I think we'd be within the, the scope of the legal notice.
So this, really, this is, the executive summary outlines the changes.
Change, changes, yep, and, uh.
So we can review these, and then if we have concerns or wanna comment, uh, we'd have the ability at the public hearing, so.
Correct.
To be clear, though, this body has no governing authority over inland wetland agents.
Correct, uh, you do appoint the members there, too, uh, we are required to forward these to the Connecticut DEEP, which, that, that's already been done, they actually have a thirty-five-day review that has to happen prior to the public hearing, so we had to submit it thirty-five days prior, which was last month. Um, so that's kind of where we're at.
Well, thank you for doing this and for sharing this with us.
Sure, then.
This is just another level of transparency, so that we're.
Absolutely, another set of eyes on the document, any thoughts, uh, certainly, it's a, it's a community endeavor.
Yep, well, it's very important, 'cause, you know, these changes, uh, you know, they might look like a minor change, it can have significant impacts in how, uh, developments are, are formulated.
Correct.
And, uh.
I will note, uh, the fee schedule, which is set by ordinance, uh, the next step in this process is the agency does wanna address their fee schedule. Because of the three-hundred-foot increase, uh, we never addressed the fee schedule to go along with it, uh, and so we're, we're getting maximum fees for projects well outside, because of the, the impervious area and the way the fee is calculated, so they're suggesting we change it to maybe a sliding scale based on distance, so we'll, we'll see what they come up with, with that.
That would be more equitable for the applicant?
That's what they were looking at.
Right now, it's, okay, I get it. All right, thank you, Gary.
Gary, real quick, if, um, if a project is ongoing now, or has already been approved, will it revert to the old one, or he'll have to adhere to the new?
If the project is currently, they, they would be falling under the previous, uh, previous regulations, and that's what we would hold them to. Now, if they decided to do some new work, modify their plans, and they had to come before the agency, then they would be subject to the current regulations.
The three-hundred-foot upland review area, that's been in place for what, like, two years now, or how many years?
About a year and a half.
Year and a half, okay.
Maybe two now, oh my gosh, yeah, I think about two now.
Two, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I think it's.
It's been two, wow, time flies.
Yeah.
We adopted it twenty, twenty-one, I think, twenty, sorry.
Almost a hundred, right?
Yeah, it was a hundred.
Hundred, then left to three-hundred.
Yeah.
Gary.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
In twenty-twenty, so it's been five years.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I remember that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Gary, appreciate it. Important stuff. Okay. Ex officio reports, start, you're under the tables, John.
I got nothing, that, my meetings are, uh, one this week and more next week, but.
Okay, great, thank you. Kevin? Anything?
No.
I don't either. Jason?
Uh, I attended the Board of Ed meeting on Monday, and they had a presentation on how AI is being used at the elementary school, which was very interesting. Um, they had a very comprehensive, thorough, and, uh, quite frankly, exciting athletics report, just all the great athletic stuff that's happening over there. There's going to be some invitations for Board of Selectmen to attend Board of Ed meetings coming up in the future, that you may want to avail yourselves of. Um, and a word was thrown around a few times that caught my ear, realignment, the Board of Ed is going to be looking at realigning things as far as where kids are throughout the school day, and it sounds like it has some pretty big implications for our community as a whole. Um, so keep your ears to the ground for those, those discussions. I also had Harbor Management, Shellfish, and a representative from the Connecticut Port Authority came, and spent a long time with us. And, um, like you guys, I've been talking to a lot of constituents recently, and I had a gentleman who, uh, made a very compelling argument about solar panels in Town Hall, and it sounded like something that could be right for the CIP once it's, it's, um, coming together. So I don't know how we have, um, community input on that, but I would just like to put that out there, um, that this is something that came across my desk, so to speak, looked really important to me, and I thought I would push it on to all of you guys. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, wait, that's not it, Stars to Stem is going to have a musical performance this Friday, Rebel Sheep, seven o'clock, ten dollars a ticket, all ages are welcome, seven to nine, thank you.
That's at the Planetary.
Planetary.
Yep. Great.
Tickets are ten dollars.
Thank you.
Okay. Roseanne, anything?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Just me.
I have just one other comment, quickly, so I did speak to, um, some people, well, it was about canvassing, and they're saying that they cannot hear, um, when they're watching the videos.
Yeah.
That they can't, the volume isn't high enough, or they just can't hear a lot of times, so if people can, like, try to speak up, I guess, I don't know, I don't know how to make it to be louder, so.
Louder to the people at home?
Yeah, that's what they're saying, they, they can't hear.
I get texts during the planning meeting saying, we can't hear.
I've also heard that. I think the fix is, we just talk into the mic like we're rappers, because otherwise, we have to outfit this place with some pretty sophisticated, um, audio technology.
Yeah, so if everybody could just speak up and try to speak into the microphones.
Yo, yo, yo.
Um, because I, I heard that on multiple occasions, so.
Yeah, same.
That was the only thing.
I'll let you.
Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, um, first look, anything else? Thanks, appreciate it. Uh, first documents report, uh, the ADA compliance is starting to wrap up here at the, at the Town Hall, um, I think one of the final things is to actually install the, the lift. The, um, the, the place where the lift goes, the, is, is, uh, nearly completed, and the next step is actually to physically install the mechanical equipment. Um, also, they did, uh, the bathrooms are open both upstairs and downstairs. The ADA ramp outside the building is completed, there was some change, uh, and I would just wanna point it out to anyone that's coming into the Town Hall. Uh, as part of the compliance, they had to, uh, change the curbing, uh, at the front, lower front door of the, uh, Town Hall. So, there is now a curb there now, where there used to be, um, an apron, so be careful when you're coming in, I don't want anyone to trip coming into the Town Hall, that is a change. Uh, but we were required to do that, uh, as part of the compliance. The Route one sixty-one, I ninety-five project, uh, it's moving along, if they will be, if they haven't already, will be opening up the new Exit seventy-four. It may be open, has anyone tried to, I'm not sure, is it, I think it is, it is open, they did open it, okay. So, uh, they shut it down a couple of weeks ago, and now the, the new Exit seventy-four is reopened, uh, and they are in the process, uh, there'll be a lot of night work uh, taking down the, uh, the steel on the old, the last section of the old bridge, and that's gonna be coming down, and, uh, so, uh, they'll be, uh, the road will be shut down at night while they do that, uh, but that usually goes pretty quickly, so hopefully, end of the week, beginning of next week, that'll be behind us. So, um, that's my first selectmen's report. We did have communications, and I think every, the board received a, a letter, and I passed out a hard copy. It was a letter from, uh, Kevin Siri, uh, and just to, uh, uh, describe the letter, he, he was concerned, and he wasn't happy with my description uh, of the Hathaway property transaction, which I, uh, described as a mess that I solved, and, uh, I wanna say publicly that, um, it was a very difficult transaction at the end, and, uh, it was complex, we were, I was able to get it across this finish line, but, uh, I did not mean to, uh, disparage anything that Kevin did, he was very, uh, we worked together very hard on that project, and basically, we ran out of time, uh, before I took over, um, last, uh, two, two years ago. Uh, but he was, uh, we worked together hard on it, and it was not meant to be a slight towards Kevin, and, uh, if, if it looked that way, I apologized to him, and he, he was very gracious when I took over, and very helpful to me, so I just wanna get that on the record, um, and set that straight.
Dan.
And Dan, this will be going into the meeting minutes, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's part of the record, yeah.
Should we read it into the record?
No.
I don't think.
I know we all had a long couple nights, but as a courtesy of, uh, Mr. Siri, it's.
It's not necessary.
Not necessary, okay.
Yeah, he hadn't asked us to read it, but he wanted it part of the record.
Okay.
And I wanted to address it, so, uh, it's mostly a chronology of how we got to the, to the closing, and, uh, so, alright. Any public comments this evening? Alright, there's no public comments, so there's no response. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Um, move to adjourn the November fifth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the Board of Selectment at seven fifty-five PM.
I'll sit.
Do we have a second? Hall in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, abstaining? Or adjourned? Thank you.